Good morning and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Those of you in the audience and those of you by way of television, welcome. This time we should call the meeting to order. All present, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, at this time, we should have invocation and pledge. The invocation shall be by Commissioner Ward and pledged by Commissioner Coswell.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve the community and the citizens of Pitt County. Be with all of us at this time, wherever we are, and bless us each day. I'm in.
Amen. Please face the flag and remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to link my chair to our county attorney. And do want to say before I do so, it has been a pleasure serving for the past year. I want to thank the county manager and his staff and all, all the people that was instrumental into making this year a successful one. And I want to let you know that had it not been for all of you working together, this would not be, my tenure would not be as rewarding as it is today. So, thank you very much for your, your service and your, your supporting the chairmanship and supporting the county commissioners during this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you do at the first meeting in December of each year, it is now time to select your chair and vice chair in accordance with the procedure set forth in your rules. And just to review those with you briefly, any commissioner may nominate any other commissioner for chairman or may nominate the current chairman or vice chairman for a second term. Nominations do not require a second. It is not necessary to open or close nominations by motion. Once all commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, we will vote with the last nominee being voted on first and continuing in reverse order until there is a majority vote. To reelect the current chair, you would need a supermajority vote. Any questions about the process before we begin? If not, I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman. Yes?
I'd like to nominate Mark Owens for chair, please.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor? Please raise your right hand. Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Owen, for receiving the office of chair. Next in turn, we will take nominations for the office of vice chair.
Madam Attorney, I'd like to nominate Glenn Webb.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor? Please raise your right hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Webb. And if you would like, we can take a brief break to rearrange your seats before you continue the meeting.
Briefly, I want to say, it is an honor to be selected by a group of your peers, in particular, the group that comprises the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. It is an honor and a pleasure for me to be put in that position, and I would do all of my endeavors to serve you in the capacity that would be fitting with your desires. Having said that, Mr. Webb, you won't say anything?
Thank you, you captured it perfectly, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in speaking to former Chairman McLaughlin, he would, had, said he would like to have the Salvation Army make a brief presentation, under presentations, if the board would entertain that, could be come after the presentation to Dr. Turnage.
If no objections, that will be. Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Send move.
Second. All in favor in the capable raising your right hand. So, order. All right. Mr. Elliott, I believe you're up next.
Yes, on the next item, you have a presentation of a certificate of achievement to Dr. Tyrone Turnage, and this is per your policy for recognizing people, groups, and events. And I believe Dr. Turnage is here this morning, so, Mr. Chairman, if we can go down, we'll make this presentation.
Mr. Chairman, since Mr. McLaughlin signed that, I believe it'd be fitting and appropriate for him to make that presentation. Okay?
Welcome to this time, with friends, if anybody would like to come up? And we have somebody taking a picture, so, we can get you, if you'd like to come, we'll get you a picture if you would like to participate. Just stand right here, we'll, if you'll just face the audience. Yeah. Why don't you come out here between us? Commissioner McLaughlin, would you like me to read this?
Yes, sir.
So, we have prepared the certificate, and we will read this. Certificate of recognition awarded to Dr. Tyrone Turnage for forty-five years of service to Pitt County communities through ministry and service. This is presented this fourth day of December two thousand seventeen, signed by our former chairman, Mr. McLaughlin.
Very good. Let me just add, Dr. Turnage was, I was so fortunate to be under his leadership as a pastor, he was the junior pastor of Mount Cavilwray Free Will Baptist Church just a few years ago, and that he, he did an outstanding job, and he continues to do a good job in the community. He works faithfully in the community. He almost worked single-handedly in dealing with crime in the area of Christian Drive. He, he just, he and his wife and family just took on that project and did a tremendous job. So, he's been working faithfully in the community, and this certificate of appreciation is awarded to you for a job well done, and you continue to do it. So, we are proud of what you do in this community. Again, thanks a lot for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Turnage, Dr. Turnage, would you like to say something to the group?
Let me say to the Pitt County School Board and community, Chairman McLaughlin and all of you, I do appreciate this. This is a total surprise. My cousin, Michelle Joyner, had me thinking that something else was going on, and then this longtime, lifetime friend of mine, Brother Tony Moore, let it slip out of his teeth and told me when I came in what was going on. But I do appreciate this, and I, I'm available to do whatever I can for the Pitt County area and surrounded areas as much as I possibly can by the grace of the most high God. Thank all of you.
Continue your good work. Thank you, sir. Mr. Manager, do we have any addresses to the board?
Um, sir, we actually have Major Kim Morris, but he's gonna be a presentation. He's actually gonna be your, if he'll come forward, we'll do him, we added him as, for a presentation.
All right.
Major Morris.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
Just here to give you an update. We sent out a letter recently. I've got a copy here, if you folks have not had a chance to read the letter. Our Christmas campaign is doing well. We're raised about fourth of what our goal is for the end of the year. We're moving into a new building in February, and with that in mind, we hope to continue, we have a number of programs going on, but today we're here to talk about our mission, our mission group, as we serve breakfast three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, our mission station. We hope to continue that. We hope to even enlarge it, to serve breakfast five days a week. But we're short on funds right now for that particular program. It's about twenty-five thousand dollars for the year. We only get in about five thousand from direct donations for that program, and so, we're asking that the county commissioners consider sponsoring that program with a grant of five thousand dollars. But again, the main thing I'd like to do is answer any questions you may have at this time. And so, I'm done. Open for any questions you have. I know we have a lot on the agenda. I don't want to take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Do want to say, Mr. Chairman, that Salvation Army does a tremendous job in this community. They always give any, I, I'm sure that each of us on this board has directly or indirectly been touched by the Salvation Army mission. We know somebody, someone in our families or loved ones has used the Salvation Army. They're there in a community, in the all-community crisis. I'm just very fortunate to have opportunity to serve on the board, and I, I just think five thousand dollars is just a small amount that could be done. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this five thousand dollars. I think it's, would be good coming from the continued fund. I talked with the manager and seemed to think that that, that can be appropriate. At this time, I make a motion that we, we approve this. Hand.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. McLaughlin, and I second his motion.
In discussion? Not all in favor?
I'd like to ask one question. This is for this year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, in the capable raising your right hand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. Mr. Manager, is Mr. Rhodes the leadoff on the next item?
Yes, sir, he is. And before, before Mr. Rhodes speaks, if I can just make a comment, this is gonna be a report about drainage districts, and just to follow up, I realize a couple of commissioners have, have brought up in the past concerns about drainage, and we want to just make sure that for this morning, that for the board's information and the public, everybody realizes that this morning is just for informational purposes, and hopefully, the board will better understand how the drainage districts are set up in Pitt County, the background behind them, and then if further discussion needs to occur with this, it could, it could happen at a further meeting if you have some directive you'd like to give us, or there's even things that staff is working on beyond the general information we received this morning, that could come in the future. But I just wanted to let everybody know, this is just information only this morning, not necessarily action or anything beyond that.
Thank you. James?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your election, members of the board. As the manager has mentioned, we do have Tim up first, but we do have two drainage-related items this morning. Tim Etheridge with the Southeastern Drainage District is, commission is here. There's a long history, and Tim's gonna try to encapsulate that pretty quickly this morning, and a lot of good information to talk about related to that. PJ Andrews with the Soil and Water Office will be on your agenda a little bit later to talk about stream debris removal, and this is specifically in areas outside of the drainage laterals that Tim Etheridge will be speaking about. So, we have certain drainage ways that are maintained by the Southeastern Drainage District, and then we have others that are really dependent upon snagging efforts like we had after Hurricane Floyd and now after Hurricane Matthew, to clean those areas out for navigational purposes and regular drainage purposes. So, first up, we have Tim Etheridge with us. He works with the Southeastern Drainage District, and he has been responsible for maintaining, he is the maintenance supervisor for these districts. He's got a few maps that'll show you exactly what areas of the county are covered and which ones aren't. So, with that, Tim, you're up.
As Mr. Etheridge comes up, just for the board's information, Mr. Rhodes and Janice Gallagher and myself met with Tim Etheridge several weeks ago, maybe a month ago. We got the expanded version of his presentation, very, very detailed and very, very great, good presentation. The way we've set this up this morning, Tim, we've kinda given you about ten minutes for the presentation, then left at latitude, maybe about twenty minutes in case there's any discussion. May not need that long, but just trying to kinda set the clock for you for, you could go on a long time, I realize.
Yeah, I believe our meeting the other day lasted fifty minutes, and we really didn't finish, so, but I've been given ten minutes, so, we will just hit the top.
Mr. Gaddis?
May I ask one question to start off with?
Certainly.
To make sure that I understand what you are talking about. These drainage districts are the districts that the adjoining landowners pay a fee for?
There is a drainage assessment that is paid by all of those individuals, that their water, when it falls, it eventually bakes it to these drainage channels. Yes, sir.
Saying, is that the only funding source?
That's the only funding that the drainage districts get unless we do like what the county is doing, and we can apply for emergency funds, too.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, continue, please.
All righty. I've been working here in the county for, well, I worked for twenty years here with USDA Soil Conservation Service. My career included about thirty years of working in drainage in eastern North Carolina. Enjoyed working with drainage, feel pretty confident in things that are going on. But what I want to do today is just talk a little bit about drainage, and I don't feel like we can start talking about drainage districts without giving a little bit of a definition of drainage itself. Drainage in eastern North Carolina has been going on for hundreds of years, and by talking about drainage, we're talking about lowering the water table in the soil. We have wet soils, and we have soils that don't need drainage or as much drainage, but without lowering that seasonal, that water table for a farmer, it extends the growing season in the fall for harvesting, in the spring for planting. There are septic tanks in this county that were, permits were given based upon drainage being there. So, drainage is important to eastern North Carolina and to Pitt County, but drainage once put in, can't just, you can't just look at it and not maintain it. You must maintain it for it to continue to function. To give you a brief history, many years ago, we had a state representative, Mark, I'm sure you remember Mr. Frank Wooton. He served from nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty-one in the state legislate, state legislature. And while he was there, he helped write the drainage law, chapter one fifty-six of the General Statutes. And in doing that, and once he retired, he came back, and he, his practice was based upon drainage. At that same time, once he got back in the sixties, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Soil Conservation Service, had a program called Public Law eighty-three dash five sixty-six. It was a watersheds program that assisted with drainage, and basically, the landowners in this county, there were lead landowners that had public meetings, that talked about drainage districts, talked about the opportunity of forming drainage districts in this county. And the landowners that were, came to these meetings, signed up if they wanted to be a part of the drainage district. For the drainage district to go through, sixty-five percent of the land mass, the acreage, had to be signed up for them to move forward with it. Mr. Wooton dealt with the legal issues of it, the easements, et cetera, and they moved on with the federal government providing dollars to do the implementation, the construction. Soil Conservation Service did the design surveys, did the design of the project, and supervised construction for it to be put in. Once all of this happened, then it was understood, and I was showing Mr. Elliott, the, the plans that had signatures of the county commissioners of Pitt County and had signatures of the Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor, the chairman at that time. This was all agreed upon by the people that were in, in place at that time. It was understood that once these projects were put in, they were to be maintained in perpetuity. Now, that's where the drainage districts are set up with commissioners. Each drainage district has commissioners that are appointed by the clerk of court. Now, in that case, let's, I'll speak about Chicade Creek. It is in Pitt County and also in Beaufort County. So, in that case, we have, or there are commissioners that represent both counties on that Board of Commissioners for the drainage district. It's tried, this attempted to be as fair and as well-represented as Pitt County commissioners are. We try to do that type job. The commissioners are the ones that set the priorities for maintenance. The commissioners are the ones that set the drainage assessment, as you referred to, Mr. Gaddis, and that is done on a yearly basis at a meeting that is publicized in the paper. And the commissioner set that, that maintenance assessment, and then provide information to the tax office, and it is sent out on the tax bill. Now, as far as, as maintenance from that point, if you look at the map that's on the screen, you will notice that portions of Pitt County are shown as white. Those are the portions of the county that are not within a drainage district. The areas that, that are of color, basically, are the areas that are covered within a drainage district in this county. Now, I want to be sure to point out one thing. I do maintenance through Southeastern Drainage Office for those drainage districts in Pitt County that the commissioners have asked me to do maintenance for. I don't do maintenance for every one of those drainage districts. The, the drainage district, Caneta Creek and Johnson Milltail. Caneta Creek is over towards Edgcombe County and goes up into Edgcombe County, the majority of it. I do not deal with drainage, I mean, maintenance on that, nor on Johnson Milltail. The commissioners of that drainage district decide who is the maintenance person and the, yes, sir?
Tim, to reiterate, when you said commissioners, we were saying drainage commissioners.
They're drainage commissioners, not the county commissioners.
And if you keep on saying that, because when people, no, 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 you're, you're fine, but when they tune in and they say commissioners, they may, we don't have anything to do with that. If we did, this would've been done a long time ago.
I certainly do, certainly do. But in this case, the drainage commissioners are the ones that decide where the maintenance is done and the monies that can be spent. They set the assessments, as I said earlier. So, in this case, as you look at this map, the white areas, there are no drainage districts. The commissioners, you know, nobody has the ability to go in there, other than the landowners themselves, pretty much, or if there's an emergency, like what you will hear about later. Within the colored areas, now, I want to tell you just a little bit more. As you get to the next map, you will see, the yellow area is what we call Pitt County Drainage District Three and Seven. A lot of people refer to it as Swift Creek, but it's made up of Swift Creek, Fork Swamp, Indian Whales, Clay Route, and also Back Swamp. There are five different small drainage projects within Swift Creek, within Three and Seven. Now, we mentioned earlier, Public Law five sixty-six, funds coming from the federal government. Funds came from the federal government, but it had to have a positive economic benefit for the federal government to get involved. They would not just put funds into it just to do the drainage project. It had to provide a positive economic benefit. One of the big reasons Pitt County looked at drainage was, years ago, tobacco was the number-one crop, and Pitt County was the number-one grower of tobacco in the United States. Tobacco doesn't like wet feet, so therefore, it needed drainage. And that's why a lot of these drainage districts, or why the drainage projects were done, and it came into this county like it did. There were other areas that are shown as white in here that, that could've had a project. When I got here in nineteen ninety, actually, I was called and asked if funds needed to be canceled for a certain area. And, and talking to the person that I needed to talk to, they said there wasn't enough public support for it, so those funds were dropped. So, as of now, those projects, drainage is not a good word in USDA anymore. It's, it's just not because of wetland issues. So, doing projects like this is a thing of the past through USDA. Now, as you look at the map that's in front, in front of you now, it shows the drainage mains and laterals of Swift Creek, and you can even see Chicade Creek up in the upper right. In this case, these are the drainage ways that we maintain. We maintain the main outlets for the people to get rid of that water. That doesn't mean that every landowner, where there's a ditch that goes up to their property, that we maintain it. No, we do not. We only maintain the drainage mains and laterals that we have easements on. Now, so you'll see what easements are like. Here's a picture of Fork Swamp Main at Jack John's Road. Now, you will notice that that has been actually mowed, and we do that every other year. We mow the drainage districts. In this case, there is an existing easement here, from the center line of that ditch, seventy-five feet on both sides of the ditch. Those who purchase land on either side are supposed to know about that seventy-five, they're supposed to be notified when they purchase the land that that easement is there. That easement is there for maintenance. We, the drainage districts, cannot give a, anyone permission to go on that drainage easement unless it's for maintenance of that drainage project. The landowners themselves can give people permission to go on there, but not the drainage district. We use the seventy-five, on each seventy-five feet, to, to basically allow us to do mowing, and when cleanout is needed, to take that material or trees that fall in the ditch and put them within that easement. We try to do the best job we can. We have hundreds of miles of channel in this county, and in that case, we respond as citizens call us as quickly as we can to deal with these situations. Now, I have hit the top of this. I have not dug down into it. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Any questions? Mary?
In looking at the map, thank you for, so much for your presentation and the brief of history and clarification from my general knowledge, but in looking at the map that just went off screen, of, in the, is that the background? There appeared to me on this map, that, that the light, that there were trees in the drainage way.
Okay.
Is that true?
There are limbs leaning over, but if there are trees in it, we, we remove those as best we can.
How far are you required, I want to find the right words, you know, to remove the trees and debris as relate to what your area encompass?
Okay. I'll answer this based upon what, you know, the law says. It's up to the commissioners of each drainage district to make the decision of how they maintain it.
The drainage commissioners.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I am, I am the arms and legs of the drainage commissioners. I'm the one that tears out the beaver dams and, and, and helps with the contractors as they do work. Yes, ma'am.
Because that was, that was my next question. Because that was, that was my next question about the beaver dams. I, I didn't, I, I didn't, I didn't want to ask the wrong question, but I do want clarification, because beaver dams are a problem.
Yes, ma'am. We're, I'm meeting with a guy right af, right, right after lunch tomorrow to talk about our beaver issues, and we're going to be hiring him to do our trapping, so.
Is that for any in the county?
That is for those that I work with, those drainage districts that I work with, yes, ma'am.
Well, here, here is what I'm noticing. On the first map, my area was not included in, which is the top part, the northern end of the, top, the northern end of the county, was not included in what it is you're doing. So, who, where, I want to understand for those citizen who has issue and ways, questions to me as it relates to drainage, because who covers that area?
Now, which, I, I put that slide back up there, now.
The blue, the pink, well, the, the, the ledgers, the, 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 the writing is not that clear, but the blue, the pink, and if that's north of, the brown is north of the Tar River, too. And then you got the green and the gold.
Well, the brown, basically.
Everything north of the Tar River is my concern that I get questions about. That's a good way to explain it.
And if it is within our channels, then if there is a concern with beavers, that individual can call me, and I will see that something is taken care of. But if it's not, if it's outside our easement on a private landowner's property in their ditches, then it's outside of what I can work on.
But if they're willing to participate, then we can still use the Beaver Services.
Beaver Management Program.
Right, your Beaver Management.
That's right.
Again, that property owner's got to be willing to participate.
Right, I mean, I, see, in my case, I own property, I pay drainage taxes myself. But when it's, my property does not adjoin to the, the drainage district main itself or a lateral. Anything between that, that main or lateral that I'm paying drainage assessment for from there up, I have to do, I and the other landowners that are in between me and the channel have to maintain that ourselves. Even getting beavers out, I've been in the ditches getting beavers out, so my water will get away.
Because I've ridden down Stokes Road and seen beaver dams, blocking just from the, the, the highway from Stokes Road. And we have a major problem with beaver dams out that way, and, and that's not your jurisdiction.
Well, it, it depends on where you're talking about. If you're talking about Grendel Creek, then it, then it is. But Grendel Creek comes under, right there at JJ's, under nine oh three. And, and it circles back up around by Country Mart, et cetera, but, and I'll be glad to talk with you about it.
I'd be happy to talk with you.
Look at a map with you and see if, see whose responsibility, I would say.
I'd be happy for you to make a con, a, a, a meeting for the people in the area, because I don't know about Grendel Creek, and I've been there all my life, so I'm sorry, I'm not that educated.
Well, just for information, if there are beavers that are backing water up along the road, DOT has an agreement with the Beaver Management Program, and they can handle situations like that also.
Evan?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to know, you're talking about the commissioners, who are on the drainage commissioners? How many and how are they elected?
The commissioners of the drainage districts, it, it depends on which one. Chicade Creek has three commissioners. Chicade Creek is out Grimesland Way, Blackjack Way, it has three commissioners, two from Pitt County and one from Beaufort County, because it crosses the county line. Pitt Three and Seven, basically, it was the large drainage district that we showed you in the yellow, and, and in that case, there are, there's about nine commissioners. There's at least one of those from Craven County, most of those from Pitt County. It depends on the drainage district, how many commissioners there are, how they were set up. But in that case, the commissioners, the drainage commissioners themselves basically have a meeting and talk about it, and, and talk with the clerk of court, and the clerk of court from that county is the person that selects the, or approves the drainage commissioners to be appointed to that board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Glenn, Glenn, then you, John.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your presentation. One of my concerns with it is, not your presentation, with drainage, is, is, has the capacity been increased over the years?
No, no.
And that's what I wanted to get at, because when these were put in, we were a very rural county. And in these areas, we still are very rural, but we aren't sparse.
Very much.
And, so the density is built up, so that's going to increase the amount going in, and that's why I believe that we're having all these flood events, even with just a heavy storm that we weren't having years ago, and, and we see that a lot. Well, anyone near a waterway is, is seeing a lot more flooding, getting closer to houses, or having houses flood out. And so the follow-up to that is, and you may not know the answer, because you're the arms and legs, but is there any plans to expand capacity?
Well, let me put it this way, Mr. Webb, at this point in time, you know, it was designed, you know, according to the, the runoff that was there at the time that it was constructed, which was, some, some projects are as old as nineteen sixty, others nineteen eighties. In that case, the thing is, if you were to consider trying to expand the channels to meet today's runoff, the problem is, we've got to do it now, and then twenty years from now, we've got to do it again. And we have to start at the outlet end, and we have to come up. As we come up, DOT has to increase the openings of bridges or culverts and everything. As you move on up, the culverts and, and private road crossings that were put in, all of those have to be increased in size, and you're talking about a project that would be millions and millions of dollars. If you talk about the engineering part of it, just hiring an engineer to do the work, we're, we're talking about an astronomical amount of money. At this point in time, I'd say, no, that is not being considered. We have worked with the planning department, and we have talked about trying to find ways of slowing the water down that's going to it, because every time we turn more water on it, well, the people at Vanceboro don't appreciate it, because they're the ones that get flooded from Swift Creek, too. So, it, the, the project itself is expanding on its own. We're having to go back where we have travel ways and, and fix new travel ways, because where a tractor could get through in the past, you can't even get a four-wheeler across the travel way anymore. It is actually eating itself out. So, it's doing a little bit of its, you know, it's doing a little expansion of its own. The other thing would be getting permits to even try to do what you're speaking of. I don't even know whether you would be able to do that or not. But we have, we have not explored that, that problem that you're addressing.
Well, I recognize that this is, this is an issue far beyond just our borders. It's, it's probably something that our friends in Raleigh need to have a holistic view of, because every time, you know, another sixty people are moving to Raleigh a day, that affects the Nushe River, which affects Continia Creek, which floods Griffin. Every time more than six people flush a toilet in Raleigh, so.
But I do want to say one thing.
Each time we hit more water runoff, we're having more, and when we're talking about millions of dollars, we're talking about millions of dollars to fix it, but we're also talking about millions of dollars in property damage every time we have a severe storm or a huge weather event. And so, at some point, we're going to hit a critical mass where we have to do something. And I think I'm, I'm hearing you in that it can't just be done here, because we don't want to push it down to Vanceboro, just like we don't want Rocky Mount, Raleigh, Wilson, everyone pushing down to us.
This is going to have to be a large planning project for it to happen, yes, sir. But I will say, I will say that after Matthew, after Floyd, it was amazing to watch these projects work, because the waters cleared out of Swift Creek, of Chicade Creek, of Grendel Creek. It cleared out before the waters from upstream made it to us, and we were able to continue to function in those areas where if those projects had not been there during those storm events, we would have been in trouble, because we'd have been not able to function for many more weeks than what we had, so.
Thank you for your expertise.
Mr. Tim, can you touch on with a little bit more information for the commissioners here about the Beaver Dam Control Committee? Now, as I recall it, that's largely federal funds, but it's administered directly out of James Rhodes Department, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
So, James Rhodes would be the contact for any beaver flooding?
Yeah, that, the Beaver Management Program is a USDA program. It is basically administered by the planning department, and that is available, and there are some, some funds there that the county puts into that program.
Yeah, and the agent that they use for the, from the federal government is authorized to go in there with a special boat and dynamite these with TNT, very effective.
Yeah.
Just to add a little bit to what Commissioner Webb was alluding to, things are very, very different now. I call it the asphalt syndrome. We have laid so much asphalt in our community, in our towns, in subdivisions which are out in the country, and, you know, with driveways and people putting shopping centers and that sort of thing. We're having a major, major problem with what they're calling wastewater drainage problems. I'm serving on a committee with the city of Greenville, there needs to be one in every town regardless of the size of it. We're talking about everything, even back to when you put a drainage pipe in the backyard of a subdivision, the number of inches that have been put and allowed for years and years and years did fine for a while. And if you live in towns like Griffin and Winnable and Greenville and Thornville, you hardly cross an intersection with a minor rain. I'm not talking about a flooding rain, I'm not talking about a torrential rain. I'm talking about an average rain that you don't have to drive through major water. And those of us who have, they call them creeks and whatever, I call them big ditches being raised in the country, running around behind our houses, come up into backyards, depending on how, how low you are. Then, you need to, I mean, we must look at this, just like you said, and it goes to Raleigh, just like Commissioner Webb said, it's the money that you all are getting and that's being allotted for some of these studies. It's on the bill, your water bill, there's a, a drainage, I don't know exactly what it's called, fee that you're paying monthly.
Tax, tax drainage.
And, you know, it's, it's expensive. What's got to be done is very expensive, and I'm not saying any of that is your responsibility, but.
And we don't get any of that much.
No, I know you don't, I know you don't, but this.
I can just clarify, when the tax bill goes out, if you're in a drainage district, you get an annual assessment.
Drainage assessment.
Drainage, I think mine is like eight dollars on my property. Those eight dollars covers the entire year, it's collected by the tax office, and then is then remitted to each of the individual drainage district commissions.
But don't, don't, doesn't the city, city have, don't the cities have some type of tax on wastewater?
Stormwater.
Imperative stormwater, that's what I'm, so that's what I'm referring to. I was aware of the one that's on the county, but I don't know. Anyway, it is a problem, and we need to go to, and we're not saying you're going to solve it.
Right, replying to what you're saying, what has happened is when this pro, these projects were designed for agricultural runoff, the water falls, it slowly soaks into the soil, and eventually makes it to the ditch, or if it's a high-intensity rainfall, it runs off. But, in today's world, when there's a subdivision there, the water runs to the curbing and guttering, hits the reinforced concrete pipe, which has the lowest amount of friction there is, so it'll go faster, and it makes it to these ditches almost like a flush. And that's why it's going down and flooding people. The projects were not designed for that, your friend.
Exactly, thank you.
Mary's got sixteen more questions for you. All right, Mary.
I, I wanted to know the flow, because the one thing that we see as everyday citizens is drainage tax on our tax bill. And is there any way we can learn the flow of the money? They say you follow the money, you'll follow where the problem lie. So, is there any way we can get a report or get some clarification on following the money and to how to fix and address or do whatever they do with the drainage tax?
I'm sure Mr. Elliott can answer that for you, Mary.
All right, Mr. Elliott.
I'll defer to Mr. Etheridge.
Well, let me, let me just tell you what we do. On an annual basis, we get the drainage assessment from the tax office as it comes in on a monthly basis. That money goes into the checking account for that drainage district. And what we do is, on an annual basis, we do the maintenance that we consider the priority to be done, and we also show on an operation and maintenance report what we've done, what we plan to do the next year, and the clerk of court gets our, our banking statements to know how much money we've got, how much we took in, how much we spent for maintenance, and she is the one that approves us to continue, the drainage districts to continue to work.
So, if we asked for a report on this, would it be coming from the drainage commissions or from the clerk of court?
You can ask from the commissioners themselves, drainage commissioners themselves, yes.
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll make that request.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we appreciate it, Tim, appreciate the report and the good work that you do.
No problem, thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, next.
Next, we have the monthly financial report, if Chris McDaniel will come forward.
If you read your material on that, you will observe that revenues have been greater than the outgoes. To me, that's always important. Is any, any questions you want to ask to Chris, or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you, Chris. Keep receiving more than you spend. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one individual who's in the audience that wanted to speak under public addresses, but we got here late.
All right, ma'am, you're on the front row. Step up to the desk there. Madam Polin-Tarver, you explain to her what the public address consists of, and take care of that, please.
Yes, thank you. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and I'll keep your time at three minutes.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of you? Could you push your hat back a little bit, so I can see you a little bit in the face? I appreciate that kindness.
Right, sister. Good morning. My name is Dorinda K. Bryant, and I had planned to sign in today as Ms. Give Me One More Moment in Time, but that didn't happen either. But I came today, actually, to thank the board, and I have this brief presentation I'd like to make to you guys today. Would that be okay? All right, great. To the Pitt County Commissioner, Chairperson, also distinguished board members, attending Pitt County citizens, and special guests, may I please take this opportunity to speak to the board today, December fourth in the year two thousand and seventeen? As many of you may be aware, I used to be, at one time, a language arts and social studies teacher and a counselor with Pitt County Schools and Tarba High School in Edgcombe County. My purpose here today is to free Joe and the rest of the world, according to the writer and author in eighteen eighty-seven, Joel Chandler Harris. You see, Joel was a brother, and as the brothers let me know when I first moved here in nineteen seventy-eight by asking me this question, why pay for the cow when you can get the milk for free? As you may know as well, Joel is also a prophet in the Bible. Joel, chapter two, verses twenty-eight to twenty-nine. December seventh, nineteen forty-one, which is Pearl Harbor Day, did not fit into this board's schedule. But, December eighteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the day slavery ended in America by the ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution and the final surrendering of Confederate soldier, General Robert E. Lee, to Union forces at the courthouse in the great state of Virginia. With all that being said, With all that being said, may I please surrender at this time to the board a copy of my final legacy to the children of Pitt County? The article is entitled, "Another Soldier Gone Home," according to Genesis, chapter three, verse 19, was published 2013 in newspapers throughout eastern North Carolina. As many of you may be aware, I gave the speech during the 1989 closing ceremony, summer session, of the East Carolina University Legislative School. My speech, "The Parable of the Sower," I took from the Book of Mark, chapter four. I read this parable by my, from my own personal copy of my Bible, which I must sadly admit was later stolen. May I please, at this time, play a copy, a recording of that parable of the sower, taken from the Book of Mark, chapter four? Bear with me, please. I turn up?
That means she needs for you to kind of conclude, and maybe if you need to come back, you can come back some other day.
Well, I'll just move right over, and I'll just close it out, how about that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. May I please, once again, take this opportunity to offer up my heartfelt thanks to each board member, past and present, the great citizens of Pitt County, others as well. Sadly enough, sadly enough, my dance here also has come to a tragic end, according to Matthew, chapter 24, verse 36. Thank you one and all, and as always, smooches, and have a great rest of the year for the holidays, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Next on my report, item three, the first, first item on meeting dates, your last meeting of the year will be December the 18th at 6:00 PM.
Can I ask a question? Mister, of the, of the chair of, of y'all?
Yes, ma'am.
She had a paper that she was reading, is that something that we can add to our...
She had a recording, she read up on the paper.
If you'd like a co-...
I got it, I'll make copies.
She has it.
We'll put it in your weekly info packet.
That's, that's, that's just lack of respect there.
In January, there will only be one meeting due to the holidays of New Year's Day and Martin Luther King's celebration, so we'll be meeting on Monday, the 8th, at 9:00 AM. Item B is the board as well aware, we've talked about it a lot, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM will be the, actually at 5:30 PM, from 5:30 to 6 is a dinner, and 6 to 8 is the opioid forum, and encouraging all the commissioners to attend if you can, I know there are a few who are actually gonna come to this for the first half, then I think go to another function thereafter, but we are anticipating a, a, a good audience on this, we have advertised and spread the word far and wide, and hoping to have a good turnout for this. Item C, if you put on your calendars, for January the 22nd, 8:30 AM, we'll be kicking off the annual CIP, which is your Capital Improvement Plan and Budget Planning Workshop, and we will be kicking off the budget season with that. The last item, the Pitt County Community College Board of Trustees is requesting a joint meeting with the county commissioners, which we've done occasionally in the past, and right now, we're looking at February 21st, 22nd, or 23rd, haven't quite nailed that date down, but when we do, we will let you know and check your schedules. Also, it's been suggested by a member of this board that we look at doing a campus tour, maybe a bus tour, and maybe we can arrange that with lunch as well as the meeting and combine all, all three elements into one, one session, so, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, next item.
Items for consent.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, Mr.?
Next item is items for decision, and the first item, and the only item you have, is this being the first meeting in December, your organizational meeting for the coming new year for 2018, would be to affirm the rules of procedure. I know we have heard from one commissioner regarding the rules with a concern about emergency meetings, I don't know if Commissioner Coulson wanted to address that?
Tom?
You know, when I first came on the board, it was, uh, it was a situation where if you had a quorum, the quorum could vote, and you have them in a majority, and you could pass a rule, or pass an ordinance, or pass, uh, whatever. And at that time, I had argued that, and not saying that we've ever had one, but we could have abuse of the, such a system, where you could have five people decide to have a meeting when they know that the other four commissioners are not available, and then you get three of those five vote for something, basically not letting the other members vote. So, we passed a rule, and I thought it covered everything, passed a rule that we would always have to have at least five regardless of the number present, but obviously having to have a quorum of five, you had to have five to either pass or fail something. Well, when I was reading through this, it had an emergency meeting, and it says in here that, that the, the five rule doesn't count in the case of an emergency meeting. I would like the wording to be changed such that regardless of whether it's an emergency meeting or not, you still need five members to be able to vote for something, uh, whatever the, the thing is, and either to pass or kill an item. So, I don't know whether everybody read that or not, but I, I just took, that just jumped out at me, maybe it should have in the past. Have the rules changed since I believe it was 2001 or 2, where you had to have five, and then now all of a sudden, emergency meetings? You can avoid the five if you, if all you have to have is a quorum present.
Madam Attorney, you want to speak to that? I don't recall any changes specifically, Tom.
No, I'm not aware of any changes. I know that the definition of majority vote, as that relates to the provision on emergency meetings, seems to be the area of concern, and the second sentence within the definition of majority vote is the language that allows that five vote necessary to pass any action to be waived in an emergency meeting. I believe to accomplish Commissioner Coulson's intent, the board, if it so desired, could just strike the second sentence of the definition of majority vote, and the effect would be that anytime the board met, it would require five votes to pass an action. I'm talking about the definition of majority vote that's on page 28 in your package at the very top of the page.
Does that satisfy your concern, Tom?
It would.
Sir?
It would.
Any other questions about the rules?
So, that means if we had a called meeting and only four people showed up, we could not take a vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I've never read it to mean anything other than the five, but, but anyway, I see Tom's concern. Are there any other questions about these rules? Do we have a motion with the addition that Tom talked about to, uh...
I would like so move that.
A second.
Any further discussions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Oh, we're gonna strike, I want to strike mine now. The majority, five. Right here, that sentence right here.
What's next, Mr. Manager?
Next, we have a, um, under items for decision, you, first item, you have Andrew Schmidt, who has a budget amendment from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
All right, sir, you're up.
Agenda, it says eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-one cents. The budget amendment is actually for seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, and that was what was sent over to, I think, the office and the budget memo and so forth, so...
You got that correction, Mr. Man?
Yeah. I just want to make sure. Well, I'm Andrew Schmidt, and I'm the executive director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and thank you so much for letting me come today. We are requesting a budget amendment of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars to our budget. It is derived all through occupancy tax, so for people at home watching too, no funds come from Pitt County's general fund, we do receive funding only from the occupancy tax that we collect through our hotels and motels. When we budget, we have to have our budget done quite early, and we forecast, and when we forecasted our budget last year and presented to you and to the city of Greenville, we were forecasting an 11% increase. We were very fortunate that our budget came in actually to a 20% increase through the tax collected versus the year before, due to increase in, in tourism, conventions, meetings, sports tourism, and also Hurricane Matthew had an effect on our hotels as well. So, we had a much higher increase in our, our budget than we would normally have over a normal year. So, what we're proposing to do is take some of those funds that we actually collected last year that we didn't forecast for and use them this year. We ended up with an eighty-eight thousand dollar and six hundred and forty-one and fifty-one cents increase last year, we're proposing to take seventy-four, seven nineteen for marketing projects, and I think the commissioners all got a budget memo with the list of projects that were on that, and I'll just briefly go through those projects very carefully. One of the things we want to do with our, our budget amendment money is to enhance the Greenville Convention Center through plasma reader boards. If you go into our convention center now, there are no plasma reader boards, there's no directional signage that says your session is in room A and B, or, you know, lunch starts at 12, your buses are gonna pick you up for your offsite event at 5 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I think the director has made his case, I move that we approve the budget amendment.
A second. Any further discussion, Mr. Garris?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion. This is very similar to what we had several months ago, and I, and I made a similar motion then, and I didn't get a second, and that's okay. I mean, I get a second this time, I'll say. First of all, I think the Convention and Visitors Bureau is doing a tremendous job for our community. I served on that board about 10 or 12 years ago before you came on, but I cannot support the use of public money for the promotion and sale of alcohol, I just cannot do that. So, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we support this budget amendment to the tune of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which would exclude item two, the Beer and Barbecue Trail Program of eighty-six hundred dollars. That's my substitute motion.
Do we have a second to the substitute motion? If not, the substitute motion dies for lack of a second, I'll be ready to vote on the original motion.
Ready.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All right, thank you.
All opposed.
No, I'm not. But, but as a result of that, Mr. Garris did allude to the fact, as the material indicates, the increase in revenues which you had brought about, all of it just shows to the good work that's going on, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, next is, do we have a motion to approve the...
So, move.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed, Mr. Garris?
I approve that.
All right, the tax administration adjustment refunds, you know, that's over a hundred dollars that we have to approve, and it's outlined in your agenda, do we have a motion?
I move for acceptance.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question on that.
Let's get this, we, now we're ready for discussion, Jenny, go ahead.
Yes. This says it was due to an error, that wa- was that an error on our part or their part?
It was an appraisal error.
So, was that on, was that our fault or their fault?
Yes.
Well, I just, and I know what the law says, the law says we can only go back the X number of years, but this error goes back longer than those number of years. So, it just doesn't seem right to me that the person is...
Goes back five additional years.
So, so the error goes back, how many years?
Ten total.
Ten total, but we're only gonna correct five because that's all the law allows us, even though it was our error that they paid more taxes than they should have paid those other five years.
That is true. If we had, if they had brought it to our attention before that, we, it would not have gone on this long, but it is corrected now and going forward.
Yeah, that's, something just doesn't seem fair about that to me, but...
We can only go back and discover five, and that's the reason they have five forward and five back.
I, I agree with you because the resident was sick from what I saw in here, and when we physically or mentally, or whatever reason that our bodies are not able to perform, we shouldn't have to be stressed out at that, and, and the law doesn't allow us to do anything else.
No.
But we did express the fact that we didn't think it was a, it's a problem, I agree with you, Mr. Garris.
Anything, Father? If not, let's go on to the next item.
Do you, can you approve, do a motion?
We have the motion to approve.
I thought we did, didn't we vote on that? If not, let's vote again, all in favor of the motion, indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you, all opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Garris? Did you get that?
I voted for it.
Thank you, okay. Number four on item 12, we're back to the...
Debris.
That's correct.
If, PJ Andrews, come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Manager, Chairman, Commissioners, thank y'all for having me this morning, I'm bringing some good news with me this morning. Pitt County has been awarded a grant for five hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars through the Division of Soil and Water Conservation to remove storm debris-related material in Little Contignia and Contignia Creeks, and even in the Lower Neuse River. That's where our focus will be, is in Little Contignia and Contignia Creek. The grant extends from January 2017 through December 2019. No county matching funds were required, however, our in-kind services for, of course, manpower in the field, our matching total in-kind services was sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars have been committed. However, our staff has already spent probably roughly a good portion of probably two to two and a half weeks doing recon work, trying to figure out where the main concentration of the debris is, and we've, I've got a few pictures to show you, there is a lot. It is definitely hindering flow. We have had multiple, multiple calls down in Griffin area, west of Aiden, and even up into the Farmville areas, so this is something that folks have been wanting and needing, the county needing for a good period of time. The map you see here on your screen is pretty much where we'll start, we'll start at the lower end, south of Griffin, and we'll work our, our way all the way back up to just north of Farmville, it's roughly forty-three miles, roughly. A few pictures here of ones that our staff have grabbed while they've been out on the boat, they have probably in excess of five to six hundred pictures. We've been working, trying to GPS all these, to try to make it as accurate as we can to make sure the money is spent as, as accurately and as, as good as it can be. There's one. And there's some of these areas that are, when the water's low enough, it's completely impassable, you cannot get through there. Another picture.
So, you really can't enjoy the water.
And recommendation is there?
Um, I move that we approve...
Second.
Quickly, so you can get to work.
Does that include all three items?
Yes, all three items.
Okay, Mr. Garris, all right, all in further discussion? Not all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Spend the money wisely.
Yes, sir, we'll get to work soon as possible, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe our next, uh, the manager is requesting a closed session, Madam Attorney, will you address us to that?
Yes, sir, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3, under attorney-client privilege to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the board and your employed attorney, under subsection A4, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries and other businesses in the area served by the public body, under section A1, as it relates to confidential information and consideration of your closed session minutes, and under section A6, to discuss personnel.
Do we have a motion to that, Madam Attorney? All, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? So ordered. Those of you that are leaving...
Look like you and Tom, ready to go home.
Thank you, we are now, appreciate your patience. Mr. Webb, you got a motion you want to make?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve our closed session minutes from November 6, 2017, for the content only.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Any further business?
Uh, yes, I have a motion to make.
Yes, I have a motion to make based upon the impending retirement of the Pitt County Tax Administrator. I would like to make a motion to appoint for interim position until the administrative position is filled, the interim tax collector as Raymond Rivera, is that correct? And interim tax assessor, Chip Main. And we need to include that. We will be setting the bond for the interim tax collector at five hundred thousand dollars and releasing the bond on Kathy Booker effective 12/18/17.
I second that.
All right, in discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand? All opposed, like? So ordered?
Can we do a motion to adjourn?
Anything else, anything else, Mr. Man?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Miss Mary?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor, right hand? Thank you.
We can skip the comments. We've been talking long.